Okay, I'll call our city commission meeting to order at seven P M, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. We've got a full board tonight, so we have a quorum and we can move into our agenda. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we got our minutes for August fourth, that was a regular commission meeting, and then August eighth for a special commission meeting. Those records look correct, we'll need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minister's post.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion in a second to approve both sets of minutes as written, we'll move to a vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Motion carries. All right, commissioners report, Kyle.
I'm kind of light on mine, as far as gravel blading, Barry did get that work done on sixty seventh and South French Street. And then did get that chloride dust control put down on other gravel roads around town. It's about all I got, thanks. I don't have nothing really that I've been working on, I've been kind of swamped with work.
You're a foot man in summer. Kind of in the same boat, light duty, but we've talked a lot about policy and procedure updates to the handbook, we've got some gaping holes in ours and me, Wendy, Liz, we've all been kind of working on that lately, I thought we'd have something that we could produce for you guys this tonight, but we're not quite there yet. So that, that should hit the next meeting agenda for sure.
I really don't have an update or anything at this time, so that's pretty much it.
All right, modifications or approval of the agenda, we do have a couple of things to change, or I'd like to change if that's all right with you guys. Josh Reiner doesn't have an update tonight, so we can scratch him off of number two on old business. The fire and tornado insurance policy, that's on old business and new business, being how we talked about that once before, we can scrub it off new business. But I would like to replace that with a Tioga fund application from the E D C. How that would shake out was we would go one, two, three, four, old business, and then five down to eleven on new business, so swapping the Tioga fund with the new business fire and tornado policy and off we go.
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes of removing Josh off to and adding the fire and insurance stuff on to old business and putting the Tioga fund application on new business.
I second that.
All right, we've got a motion in a second to approve the modified agenda, is there any discussion on that, Stephen, you're good with it? Okay, let's move to a vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Motion carries, okay, old business number one, Liz, are you there?
I am, can you all hear me?
We can.
All right, very good, well, good evening, everyone, I will be quite brief, I agree with the other commission members, it's been busy. I don't have too much that's ripe for discussion, I will second what Brett said in the respect that we have been working somewhat diligently rather to fill gaps that have become known to us in policy. I likewise, I know Wendy and Brett, to give them complete credit, have been working quite hard on that. We, I expect we'll have some updates on that at the next meeting. I'm familiar with the agenda, I'd like to keep it moving forward, so I don't think I have too much else to share tonight, there'll be more details coming up. I guess I will note that there are some depots to be given the first week of September, I don't know the meeting date right offhand, but I should have more details coming up with that and, and those that are involved for the city are aware of that, so that's what I have this evening.
Questions for Liz? Pretty quiet here, Liz, thank you. All right, moving on, community center update.
Good evening, so our key tasks due this reporting period. We did final clean. Received our certificate of occupancy on August seventh, and the owners F F me has been moved in. So due next reporting period, we should wrap up our punch list items by next meeting. Some of the main ones we have is boiler startup and blocking out the flu, that is on those boilers. Obviously, it's not going to be ninety degrees forever, so once it cools off a little bit, we can start those boilers, some hot water through the building, make sure all the hydronics are working. And complete that. J C I, which is Johnson trolls, they still have to upload the graphics onto the computer at the mini center, so that when she pulls up the graphics, all the equipment, new equipment will be on the same page as the old equipment, so they still have to do that, but all in all, I'd say punch list is probably ninety-seven percent complete. That's my update on construction.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have two pay requests. First one is number thirteen, it is for two hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I'll make a motion to approve payout number thirteen for two hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Sorry, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three and ninety-nine cents.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion in a second to approve payout number thirteen, is there any discussion on that? Move to a vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Motion carries.
Next one, which is payout number fourteen, is for retainage, it is six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, five hundred and thirty, six hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty cents.
You say that one more time?
Six, eight, zero, five, three, five point three.
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve payout number fourteen for six hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars, thirty cents.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion in a second to approve payout number fourteen, any discussions on that one? Okay, move to a vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
Is this it?
That's it. No, you got, there'll be a couple more payments.
Same.
We've got about two to three hundred thousand left to bill up.
I miss the way you belt out the pledge of allegiance, I really enjoy that every time you're here.
Thank you.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
All right, old business number three, we got the chip seal project, Rose.
Good evening. So tonight I'm bringing forward the application number two, this covers all the paintwork that was done, currently the only thing left waiting on this project is the pavement marking obliterations. Gracing the whole pavement markings, the hundred and thirty-one feet about, of it, about six hundred dollars worth of work, other than that, everything's been done to this point. So this brings forward all the payment for the pavement, painting that was done. With that in mind, knowing that there's only about six hundred dollars left to work and that's kind of a set amount, it's not like there's going to magically be more pavement markings to erase or pop up, it's kind of hard to overrun on that one. We kind of know that this project is going to come in about nineteen thousand dollars under budgets, I can also report that tonight to you. About four percent. So what I'm looking for tonight is a motion to approve the payout application number two for the twelve thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my computer's like no internet, so someone's having either, so.
Can you say it, can you say the price one more time?
Twelve thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the payout number two for twelve thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve Rose's payout number two, any discussion on that? Move to a vote?
Yes, yes, yes.
Motion carries.
Got nothing else, one of you guys got something for me?
Great.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, number four, we talked about this last meeting, that's the fire and tornado insurance policy, we had a little discussion on whether or not we should be covering all of that, or if we wanted to split some of that stuff out to the park, being how it's parked, owned. The feedback I got was this policy is in effect already, it would be wise just to keep it for the remainder of the year, and then I believe Dan and Kelsey had talked about possibly getting in on that next year, is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, okay. So anyway, if you guys are good with it, well, I guess we'll need a motion to approve the insurance policy and the amount of thirty-seven thousand, grab your pen. Thirty-seven thousand and seventy-four dollars.
Make a motion to approve the fire and tornado policy for thirty-seven thousand, seventy-four dollars even. I'll second.
Hey, we got a motion in a second to approve the insurance policy and the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars, or thirty-seven thousand, seventy-four dollars, any discussion on that? Okay, we'll move to a vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Motion carries. On to new business, so sounds like we got some lots for sale, Dan, hopefully.
Did you get the, the next, so briefly, just, I'll just kind of briefly read part of that letter is, is, but it's recently and probably in the last year, but especially in the last few months. There's just been an increase of inquiries of lots to, to buy and to build a home. And even I had one today, it came in. And I'd show them, you know, different spots and what developers have and what is available or seemingly so available out here. But the the location is up there in Annabelle on the west, on the east side of, of the development there, there's a strip of land there that's about, I'd say roughly nine hundred feet long by about a hundred and sixty feet deep. That's just a, just a rectangular piece of land. There is a gas pipeline that does run through there on the very south end of that between the four plexes and then, and of course, then our land starts there, so, but I guess, I guess what I would propose and would like to see is if we were willing to parcel off that land, probably in about a half acre size. And in the drawing there, I gave kind of a dimension of, of what a half an acre would be about a hundred and sixty-two feet by about a hundred and thirty-five feet in width. And then if we took that measurement or thereabouts, might be a little bit less. And maybe have to tweak some things maybe a little bit, I don't know, I think the surveyor would, would probably give some guidance on that. Because of the utility boxes that are out there for the electrical and the communication boxes that are in on that property. There is, basically, there is no sewer and water that's dubbed into those lots. But there is obviously water and sewer in the street. So it can easily be, you know, tapped into, just have to cut up the street.
Is that something we would want to do? If we're going to plow them, separate them out, would we want to go in and tap into the mains right off the bat and put curb stops in?
I think it would be probably advantageous to have that done and it's complete and then, or that we will do it. And then I, you know, Liz, maybe could give us some guidance here too, but the property would have, if we haven't platted off at least. You know, and if, and it'd be nice and convenient if we stubbed it in, then that's done. Kind of on our terms, you know, where we get all five or six or seven you know, stub bins done by one contractor at one time, probably might be more efficient.
It would be cheaper for us to do it right up front, all, all in a row.
I would tend to agree with that. And then, and then of course, then put the lots up for sale via I don't know if it's an auction or, or if it's a bid, bid process or whatever. And then of course, you know, I'm sure we can have a minimum price, you know, starting point for, for that, you know, at that point.
I don't know, guys, it would make sense to me if we just went in and tapped into our mains and then ran them up to the curb, I think there'll be a lot more advertising for potential buyers. It'll be cheaper for us to do it all in one swoop rather than individually coming in and doing it. I guess it'd be really nice to do something for the community that would make moving here easier on them.
Several people have said, and, and even if you go up there, if you're familiar with the area, is there is a nice view of Ness's office across the highway, of course, and, and the Hess plant, that's kind of the right, kind of the, you know, scenery, if you like the mechanical and the flame and all that kind of stuff of our economy up here. But it'd be a nice, it'd be a larger lot that we don't have in, in the city right now, it's, it tends to be small lots and so I think this would be it's something there and to produce and, and have a little bit of tax revenue, right now, there's nothing coming from it. And the demand is there.
I guess the only question I have, Dan, and you would know that better than I would, is, is there an advantage to further dividing what are the Annabelle lots, what are they an acre apiece right now, or what's the story on that?
Well, can you say that again? What advantage would there be?
Yeah, to further division, because you would need a surveyor to come out and further divide, what's the market looking for? Are they looking for complete acre lots, half acre lots, two acre lots, what are you hearing?
Well, the, the, what I'm hearing is, is, is probably a half acre in that range, more or less. There's been some comments of, of an acre, but really up there is kind of, there is a small, there's a lot of small lots and a lot of small things, and then all of a sudden to go, you know, with an acre. With an acre, you probably only get about three lots out of there, roughly speaking. Whereas we could get six or seven lots out of, out of doing the half acre or up to a half acre.
All right, thanks, no, I was just, just curious to know what people were asking.
Oh, guys, what do you think, those are big enough, right, I certainly wouldn't go any smaller, we have plenty of those micro sized lots in town, they're not moving, so.
I think that figure's pretty good.
All right, so what are we looking for, are we looking for motion to list, a motion to survey?
I, I would think that we would want a motion to, to get a survey, you know, and a plat done on, on that, and then to work with whoever that surveyor may be. Whether it's our city engineer, more engineering, they have their survey crew, or whomever you decide to, to utilize, and then and then I, I'm not sure when you would want, well, we got to establish where the lots are going to be, and then we can move forward with the infrastructure.
That's the game plan now, survey, list, have our sale, but put in utilities for people, so when they build, they can hook up without interfering with the street. No specials, no nothing, right, just making lots available to people?
Yeah, and with, with the utilities, I mean, you can decide what, you know, to establish a price per lot. And, and then, yeah, and then have no specials, no, you know, have that into, built into the price of the lot or the bid, the lot.
It seems like an attractive deal.
Yeah, a question real quick though, Dan, so at one time, these were kind of earmarked for senior housing, what, what changed there?
We've had, I've had two contractors, they, one, one actually came to city commission probably I don't know, three years ago, maybe, I mean, it's been some time, he has not I've asked him several times, even other contractors, subcontractors, because he was talking, the talk was out there. And he just has not fulfilled, he hasn't come, you know, and I'm, I'm done, I'm moving on. And I talked to another contractor, a local person, and he was interested, but he hasn't produced nothing yet either, so I think when we have a demand and something here, we can move forward, and not to say that we can't do senior housing there anyway, even if we plow these off. You know, I mean, it still can be done. I just think that that would have been a nice, at that time, and even, even today, you know, it, it would be a good thing to have a housing area for geared for seniors that can live, you know, the fifty-five and over or whatever, and maybe not be so rigid or you know, like these communities, you know, have it maybe more just, you're independent, you just buy the lot. Build the house accordingly, three foot doors, three foot bathroom doors, shower pans, you know, where there's no curb, you know, quasi handicap accessible type of thing. I think would, would sell very, very quickly and very easily also.
And Jayden, I guess for greater clarity, what we had asked of that contractor was the presentation of what's called a homeowner's association, that's the lawful way in which you can create covenants and rules that are both inclusive and exclusive, and I can vouch for the fact that there were several conversations on that point and one was just never produced. It was an, it was an H O A agreement that was lacking, so if that helps at all, that's kind of where that landed.
That's correct. It kind of sounds like this would be better than.
Yeah. And if a senior person wants to move in, you know, from the country or whatever, I mean, they can buy a lot and build a house accordingly, too.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll make a motion to prove that we move forward with maybe surveying and plating on, on this property, see. I'll second that, that comes.
All right, we got a motion in a second to survey and plow the Annabelle addition, these proposed six lots, right?
Yep. Okay.
Any other discussion on that? All right, we'll move to a vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Motion carries.
Question.
Yes.
Who do you want or what latitude do I have or whatever as far as getting the surveyor? Is there? Now, I'm just, I'll just say, say more engineering, have, you know, do we want to have a price about how much that's going to cost, I can get another one that does a lot of work here in town, it does a good job. He works for another engineering firm, but you know, if, you know, do you get a price on it, or I think it's they're all going to be relatively close in price. And either, either one I would be fine working with, but maybe you should give me some guidance there too.
I have no preference on who we use as long as it gets done.
It should be pretty cut and dry, I mean, there, there should be no extra fluff in this.
Just a rearrangement of the lock and so.
I'd say whoever we can get, let's get her done.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, it would be part of your scope anyway, so, and just do your thing.
Good, thank you.
All right, moving on to number six, this is the Axon enterprise quote. Gosh, you're going to have to help me out with this, because it's kind of Greek to me, all, all I see is huge numbers.
Yeah, they're pretty big.
Okay, so in essence, this is going to be a one percent application, so I want to preface this with that. What we're looking to do is Axon recommends a refresh of your TASER equipment once every five years. They've, you know, demoed us one of their latest and greatest tasers, the TASER ten, which has the ability to shoot ten probes instead of just the two at a time that we currently have, and it was really super cool, but you know, with feedback from other agencies in our area and from department wide, to include the two TASER instructors I have, they want to maintain what we have with the TASER seven, so what I'm looking to achieve here is to refresh our TASER seven equipment, we would trade these in, I think they, if I read right, they're going to give us two hundred and fifty dollars apiece, trade in value on these, they would give us new tasers, new cartridges, new targets. Also built into this quote, that's a little bit unique that we haven't had before, that's new product on their line there, is a virtual reality training. And this is a pretty cool system where the officer would, you know, put on a virtual reality headset, the training officer would have the ability to control how the scenario plays out, that the officer is engaged in, in the headset. So it'll provide our officers not only the ability to virtually train with the TASER, but potentially utilize this for de-escalation skills and also potentially, you know, shoot, don't shoot type situations where a lot of larger agencies pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for the three hundred and sixty degree screen type deals, this is just a headset that we can dawn and be able to conduct that training, which though is very expensive on the front end, I can promise you, the cost for a cartridge on one of those tasers is not cheap, so in the long run, it might wind up helping us out a little bit. So the overall cost of this project is forty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty cents. That's going to be a turnkey project, that'll come with the new TASER handles, the training headset, the targets, what we refer to as a new halt suit, where we can load these cartridges will have like a Velcro where it's not a probe, but it'll come out as though it was, and you put somebody in that and it's better because you don't get shocks, that's nice. And so that's what we're looking to get out of one percent.
So you just need a motion to go to the one percent?
That's correct.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve PD to go to one percent for this Axon quote.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion in a second to approve the Tioga PD to go to the, the one percent for this Axon application. That sound right, guys? Okay, any discussion on that? I'll move to a vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Josh. All right, next we got that Tioga fund application, so what this was for was for the, the ninth annual drone camp, and the amount requested was ten thousand dollars, this is from the Tioga area, E D C.
Make a motion to approve that ten thousand dollar request for drone, for the drone count. I'll second.
All right, we got a motion in a second to approve the Tioga fund application from the Tioga E D C, and the amount is ten thousand dollars, any discussion on that? All right, let's move to a vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Motion carries. All right, eight and nine are kind of same saying, we've got step schedule increases, so the first All right, eight and nine are kind of same, same. We've got step schedule increases. So the first one is for Sandy Clark. Um, that's six years of service and you guys see her current rate and proposed new rate. Can you, no, you can't.
I'll rattle it off to you.
So current is twenty-eight, sixty-one with the step schedule advancement, it goes to thirty dollars and five cents.
I'll make a motion to approve this, uh, raise recommendation, uh, following the step schedule. Um, with the new rate of, uh, thirty dollars and five cents.
A second now.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to approve the raise recommendation for Sandy. Um, any discussion on that? Move to a vote?
Yes.
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 Carries. And then next we have one for Desi. She's been with us for twelve years. Um, current is thirty-two, eighty-seven, suggested is thirty-four, fifty-one.
Make a motion to approve that skip, step schedule, uh, raise recommendation. Uh, at the rate of thirty-four dollars and fifty-one cent.
A second now.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Desi's raise recommendation. Is there any discussion on that? And we'll move to a vote.
Yes.
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 Question carries. And number ten, that's, uh, a street light repair quote for Triangle or Electric. Um, and Sandy, that one's fifteen thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and four cents.
Yeah, so unfortunately I was the one that got hit by the hit and run over by, uh, mad hosts. That light pole sets what that is for. I'll make a motion to approve that, uh, quote from Triangle for the street light repair, the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and four cents.
A second then.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve the Triangle Electric Street Light Repair Quote. Any discussion on that? Got to have it, right? Okay, let's move to a vote.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. All right, Kyle, I bet you know a little something about this one. Uh, Levin's the VAC trailer purchase request.
Yeah, so I was, I guess, been talking with the street and water guys a little bit. Um, every year they go around and there's some storm sewer drains that are all plugged up from grass clippings, pop cans, other debris and trash that gets down there. Um, they've been cleaning them out different ways. Um, Kirk and I have talked, um, about possibly getting a VAC trailer. He did talk to, um, Brian over at RDO in Williston. Um, he did, uh, get a quote from him, uh, about this VAC trailer. It's got six hundred and four hours on it. Um, they would take it in the shop, look it all over, fix anything that needs to be fixed before they would sell it. Um, we'd get new hoses, I guess. Um, I guess the one thing that I would like to add, I talked to Brian today. I would like to get a, um, arm assist, I think is how they phrase it. It's basically like square tubing that comes out the back that holds the hose. So it's someone's not actually holding the hose, so it's just better ergonomics for, uh, people sucking out the debris. Um, this quote is for seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, but like I said, this arm wasn't in that quote, which is another three thousand. Um, it's not a a ditch, which is a little bit more expensive. Um, but this one I've said is used. Um, they have looked around some. But this is kind of what they found. It's in the rental fleet right now, I guess. Any questions?
So are we, are we looking to do more likely not to exceed since we don't have a hard bid for the assist?
Well, the, the assist is three thousand bucks. So it'd be eighty-one, four, four, five is what it'd be. Um, and that would be the arm, uh, installation, all that. So we um, I didn't get a revised quote, but Brian said it's three thousand bucks for that arm.
You're confident that this will get used to the point that we don't need to contract out this type of stuff?
Yeah, so right now we've been using, uh, Gustafson, like if, if they got to come in and do like, um, the drainage side. He comes in, sucks it out. So we would be able to save there. I do know, um, I can't remember the pricing for rental of a VAC truck or VAC trailer, excuse me. Um, it is pretty expensive. Um, I think it's like six thousand bucks a month. So it's pretty expensive, but, um, as far as maintenance on it and replacing of parts. Um, Brian said there's a few parts like spray nozzles, things like that that are minor, but it's pretty minimal maintenance, I guess.
Yeah, I, I rent these, well, the full blown hydro vac trucks all the time at work. And it's like three thousand bucks a day, no matter what, whether it's an hour or twelve hours. So if you think we're going to use this, but thirty times, it'll pay for itself.
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if, if either that or we can keep looking for more used ones. Um, a brand new one's over a hundred and twenty thousand bucks. That's way too high. Um, so that's why we're looking on the used side. Um, and like I said, six hundred hours is partially depreciated out, I guess, to a certain degree. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, quote, uh, from RDO for the VAC trailer in the amount of eighty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-five.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve the RDO quote, the amount of eighty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Any more discussion on that? Okay, move to a vote.
Yes.
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 And carries. Uh, lastly, the consent agenda. We've got our August bills, payroll for eight twenty-two. Um, the planning and zoning building application, planning and zoning building application for Junkins. I'm sorry. First one is second for Junkins. Um, planning and zoning preliminary plat for the Tioga High School. That is the consent agenda, so we'll need a motion to approve if everything looks good.
I make a motion to approve that consent agenda. A second.
All right, Kyle with the motion, Jaden with the second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Move to a vote?
Yes.
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 Question carries. Uh, just so you guys know, bills for August was three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and three cents. Payroll was sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-one and forty-nine cents. And I know Chuck's not here to ask, but if he asks you, get him some numbers. All right. Lastly, our, our new agenda item that we approved in policy, what, last meeting, public comment. Anybody have anything they want to say? Yes, ma'am. I haven't. The most I've done is I've just gone out there and poked around through the woods and flip breakers. Montreal Williams came and checked everything out and that's as far as I got with it. And that was a long time ago.
So the flagpole guy comes, do you think it's okay to order the flag and, you know? Is he supposed to come sometimes? We just hope with the flag on.
I'm not even really sure how a guy goes about replacing that because, I mean, there's conduit that goes down into the ground, but I'm, I'm fairly certain it doesn't go the full length to the power pole. And somebody had flagged the electrical line shortly before I went out there, the electrical and the water. And according to the route that they took, it went through all of like that tree row. And I don't know right, it like went right through it. So it doesn't make sense to me why it wouldn't go to the east a little bit, go on the backside of the tree row and then to the power pole. I don't, I don't know what the answer is there. If we gotta just pour in a new electric line or just trench around the tree row, but it's going to be a bit of a puzzle and I haven't, I haven't done enough for you on that yet, but I will.
So I know like over at the fire and ambulance hall, the flags over there, we don't have them on power. But they have, uh, um, sun, uh, lights on them, solar lights on them. So I think it's just one light, possibly two.
In the night and the lights not on, it's that close to the shadows. Solar lights only lasts till about four o'clock in the morning. So anybody's.
I looked into those two. When I seen the direction of the power line to the power pole, I'm like, shoot, we're going to have to go solar. But then I looked into it. I'm like, that's not going to work. We gotta have permanent power.
I guess if anything, would it work for a partial timeframe until we can get the get the power actually trenched over there and I mean, I would hope we can get that done this year. I mean, it's only August eighteenth.
Something's been in September. I hope I did. So being the communicator, I would say. I guess if we don't have it, I just say don't have that period or at least we have the pole, otherwise signals, I mean, we wait to get him back again.
Yeah, I, I think we're fine. If he comes in September, we just gotta, I don't know, someone's going to have to help me with that too, or at least keep me accountable to keep working on it because it, it it fell off my radar the last couple of weeks for sure. There's no doubt. But as I was driving in Sunday, I was like, huh, beauty, the lights. Does want to just keep reminding me. Okay, anyone else? Well, you know what to do.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Right, we got a motion and a second to adjourn. We'll move to a vote.
Yes.
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 Question carries. We are adjourned at seven forty-two PM.
Thanks, guys.